We're good, nobody on?
We're ready. I think it is time once officially called this meeting of the Mount Vernon City Council's order, it's coming into July, and with the call to order as our authority, can just agenda or?
I would approve of the agenda.
Okay, Craig. Second to move forward the agenda as presented. That includes Laurie's item thirteen or something, nine twelve, I guess. All people in motion please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The occasion is sexual meeting, anybody here to speak to anything that's on the agenda or general public comments? Very good, I think I will keep moving forward here. Consent agenda, two items, minutes and order for license. Comments, questions?
I would move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Craig?
Second.
Move second to move consent agenda by big mark, all in motion please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries from the public hearing section of the meeting. And one is the public hearing on construction bid for street improvements, Glen Street Extension Project. Officially open this public hearing. You're here to speak to that item. Anybody that contacts the city hall or any comments to council during Heritage Day weekend?
Talk about a lot of things.
Hearing no comments on this part of public hearing, I think we want to close the public hearing officially. Move to item G one. That is the resolution making reward the construction bid for street improvements, Glen Street Extension Project. That's a roll call vote. And that is eight seventeen, I remember correctly. Eight seventy-seven. Two fourteen fifty-one. Anything to add?
No, there are eleven bidders happy with the bid environment. We have at eight seventy-seven, that's less than what we had projected.
I'd move approval of the resolution seven dash one dash twenty twenty four E. Have we heard of the construction bids for street repairs for Glen Street Extension Project?
I will second a quick question, this is coming from the, the funding is coming from the board, we just made a recite, correct?
This is the bonding that was specific to this extension?
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Moving second to move forward with one twenty twenty four B. One quick question, you had a construction meeting today, right? On this project for Glen J now.
For?
Wrong, wrong, okay. No other questions. We're going to vote on that resolution.
Actually, Mayor, if I can interject, I think you tabled this at your last meeting.
Oh.
Yeah, we moved the resolution, the public hearing wasn't tabled, you have to move the resolution first.
I would move, we remove from the table resolution seven one twenty twenty four E.
Thank you Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Mark. And this is to vote for the untabling of that resolution. So that is a vote, that's not a roll call vote. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is the Paul and Scott motion a second to move forward for the next step? Good, so we're ready to put roll call vote on that one.
Turner?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Andreessen?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
That resolution passes, thanks for catching me on that one. Back to E two, public hearing on construction bid for street improvements, the Business Thirty Overlay Project. Officially open that public meeting, public hearing. Anybody here to speak to that? Any comments at city hall? Only comment I have outside of looking forward to the chips off of this going out to Bryant Road and that circus and that keep that old dust down. There's been a lot of dust out there this summer, but positive. Is there a connection with the Lisbon Project two, semi-wise?
There is, so there was only one bidder for this project. It was basically the Substate version of the half-burger here. I had hoped that we would be able to push this project off a little while. However, in the same time, Lisbon moves toward a third section this year. This probably the cheapest that we get unless there's another gallon run. So I'm going to recommend moving forward and just probably be able to get four streets done this year as well.
And was Kelly the successful bidder at Lisbon, or is it?
Yes. Really the only bidder.
They're in two, so.
Is there thought that the two can be combined from a scheduling standpoint to minimize?
So unfortunately, no, and the reason for it is four street requires curb and gutter work. And so you have to remove curb and gutter on for it and then.
I apologize, I think I was unclear, I was kind of talking about combining with Lisbon.
Oh, yeah.
To minimize Highway thirty, okay, gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Your equipment's deployed.
Yeah, exactly. What's her doing?
This process will go really fairly quick.
Yeah.
And they'll, they'll make a stretch out of it again.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions as far as the public hearing part of that street improvement project? And then I will close the public hearing on E two, move to a G three. Making reward construction bid for street improvements, Business Thirty Overlay Project.
I'd move resolution seven dash fifteen dash twenty twenty four E. Resolution making reward of the construction bid for street repairs for the Business Thirty Overlay Project.
Thank you Paul, is there a second?
Second.
Mark. Moving second to move forward, the Business Thirty Overlay Project as presented, and that is a roll call vote, so.
Just briefly, so this is the bid in front of us for the seven eighty-one, seven thirty-seven.
Yeah, yes.
Additionally.
Any other questions? Motion carries.
Andreessen?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
That resolution passes. We're now on to item E three, public hearing on construction bid for sanitary sewer improvements with twenty twenty four sanitary sewer renovation project. Officially open the public hearing for that, and is there anyone here to speak to that agenda item? And any comments from the city hall? Am I here yet?
Yes.
Any other sudden contributions?
I feel like we need to set AI to examine your performance and see how many times you've made that joke. Because I guarantee it's more than tonight.
But it's the first time I've heard.
Right, so new audience.
Well, I think we still have the public hearing over there, is there any other public comments that needed reflect in the minutes here? And then I'll officially close the public hearing, we'll move to G four, which is a resolution. Move forward on every project.
Move resolution seven dash fifteen dash twenty twenty four E. Resolution making reward of the construction bid for sanitary sewer repairs improvements in the twenty twenty four sanitary sewer rehabilitation project.
Thank you Paul, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Paul and Craig. Move second to move forward, seven fifteen twenty twenty four C. And we are ready to vote on that.
One quick question, just is this in relation to the mandates from the state?
No, this is actually part of the million dollar Lynn County ARCA funding grant.
Okay.
We spent just shy of three hundred thousand, I believe, on televising and judging certain areas. While they're doing that, during the televising of certain areas, they had identified projects that could be corrected as part of the rest that remained in one million. So the bid of seven oh nine, four sixty-four was perfect. Because that will take four million dollars of that grant proceed. May very much thank Lynn County.
Thank you.
Any other questions about that resolution? We're ready to move forward with the vote on that.
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Andreessen?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Move to item E four, public hearing on proposal to enter into development agreement with community housing initiatives incorporated. Officially open that public meeting. Is there anybody here to speak to that? And that's three hundred ninety-five thousand. Starting to generate some conversation in the D, I would say. Guess we'll close the public hearing on that and move to G six, which is passing a resolution. Questions for staff, any questions in general about this? Four years of making, if not?
Yes, at least.
I would move to approve resolution seven dash fifteen dash twenty twenty four E. Approving authorization execution of the development agreement between the city of Mount Vernon and community housing initiatives.
Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Move second to move forward item G six, and we're ready to vote, Marshall?
Rose?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Andreessen?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
That resolution passes, an item on this general area. This was the fruits of a housing commission that was established a decade or more ago, which hasn't had a lot of reason to meet because there hasn't been. Do we need to reignite the housing commission or is that premature? There's not a lot of money, or? You need to think about it, you don't have to answer right now.
Yeah, I think there's merits to vote. I will say that the money that is on, coming from the two current subdivisions will be eaten up for the most part with the whole project.
And we don't need to have a commission if we're not going to have?
They can make recommendations, sometimes it's hard to get volunteers to come if there's no.
Burning.
Yeah, there's, there's not a funding mechanism that we can give them to that wouldn't excite them or let them work towards projects either.
I think between this and the potential for the alternative rolling units, we've made a lot of, well, depending on how that goes.
Correct.
A lot of headway on their recommendations, so for now probably not.
And that's why I'm going to hold off unless somebody has a strong feeling whether you think we reignite that group. I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I've recorded from his audit.
When will we start seeing funding from the new addition? And the last few of Stone Brook and then the new addition, I'm not sure what they're calling that.
So you'll see some of that funding start coming back into the general fund next fiscal year, not the one we just started.
Not twenty twenty five.
Right, and so both of their purchases are on course to meet their maximum allotment for that phase within next year.
So just thinking along your lines, one of the, one of the things that was of value that I believe to the community that the housing commission did do prior to a major project was they did the grants for low, middle income households with HVAC improvements and that type of thing. So that, that may be that next phase, get them back to look at, you know, depending on what the numbers look like. But I do know that there were people that benefited from that, as well as the community as a whole benefits from that. When you have that sort of whole urban renewal experience with people that wouldn't necessarily be able to make those kinds of improvements otherwise.
Point made. I don't know how big a deal we want to make when the groundbreaking happens with this project, but if there is an official groundbreaking, it's like council and staff. But to invite back members from the housing commission that were involved with awful years ago in the establishment of getting this CHI grant work, even though it's in process four years ago and they haven't done much lately. But to recognize that they did achieve something during that time, while the other, that's not my agenda if we have a big deal with.
Yeah, the unspoken part of this would be that this one development will potentially open another fifteen to twenty acres. And then general vicinity for the infrastructure that is going in to serve this, this thirty unit deal. Will open more acres that are not necessarily something for those homeowners, so.
Well, and ideally, I mean, all thirty units won't be filled, but folks locally, I wouldn't imagine, but some will, and that will free up some housing, some existing housing as well, so. Excellent.
I think the market may be north to south of Highway thirty, between here and about forty miles to the east, twenty miles on the east side of Highway thirty. You want to retire in some of the small towns that are there, or you want to retire in Mount Vernon, that's what I'm thinking. I think we're to the point of, what do you have, resolution G six, if there are no further questions on that one. Thank you, Marshall, are you ready to put that? Read the vote on that one, okay, and we'll move on to F one. Or this is about to check twenty seven, track commission of Mount Vernon municipal code. I might add that since the last meeting, I had two people catch me at Heritage Days, one would be on this commission, and I had two applications in my mailbox today. And then somebody volunteered three other people to be.
That's exciting, I see.
We haven't even signed it officially yet.
Do we, what other openings do we have?
I'm sitting on one for Parks and Rec.
I know, it's.
I can't.
This one's full, but I got some.
That's two. That's two.
Hat wearers, Paul's a comedian. My youngest just turned thirty and was here all weekend. I had to stick with the bad batch. He's a comedian.
So that's the background on, on F one, but this is the third reading, anything new at the city hall at all about this one? Other than that, there's a lot of.
A lot of interest.
I would move ordinance number six dash seventeen dash twenty twenty four A in ordinance adopting chapter twenty-eight Cemetery Commission of the City of Mount Vernon Municipal Code.
Thank you Paul and Mark. Move the second of this third reading, and I think we're ready to vote on that.
Turner?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Andreessen?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
That order passes. Getting to the resolutions, I think it was G two. Proven fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five transfers as presented by staff. Any questions of staff on that? Pretty.
This is pretty normal. At the beginning of each fiscal year, we'll move kind of those predestined debt service payments to the accounts where we're going to pay them from, mostly kind of to debt service. But we have to show that we're borrowing from all of the other accounts, so. They're pretty much self-explanatory with the exception of the water treatment plant appreciation. We borrowed that money internally from the water treatment plant appreciation account to purchase the church for.
With that, I would move approval of resolution seven dash fifteen dash twenty twenty four A approving the initial fund transfers.
Except, second?
Second.
Mark. Move the second to move forward the twenty twenty four, twenty five transfers as presented here.
Turner?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Andreessen?
Yes.
Rose?
That resolution passes. To G five, resolution seven fifteen twenty twenty four D, setting salaries for the appointed officers and employees in the city of Mount Vernon this year twenty twenty four, twenty five. I think the one item that I was going to address there and reference in our conference was crucial salary. And the background of this is that this is a process that we went through either two or three years ago, if I remember correctly, so it's not unprecedented for council. I, fifteen, eighteen months ago, when I wrote a nomination for Chris, city manager of the year, I guess this was eyes wide open, but there were nine hundred and forty-two towns in Mount Vernon, in Iowa, they're going to recognize, oh, we have opening, let's see what, what this guy's doing here. But I don't think it would be very smart to not recognize, you know, positive achievement by doing the nomination. So I stand by that, that decision last year and he was selected, so that was a good choice. But I talked to some of you about this process, actually, this is the fruits of, a lot of this is the fruits of Mayor Prossian and Rose here. And researching this two years ago and then again this year, referencing back to the Grinnell labor study, if you go back far enough there. I also found out, as checking with people in the community, what feelings were, and I was told by the school district that they actually did, actually did the same thing for the first time ever for principals this year. That they decided, decided two or three or whatever percent rate, they did, supplemented the principals' salaries, I think going into this, this week or now. So it sounds not precedent either in the community or with, with council. And I think I kind of picked a number, I'm not sure, maybe it was your recommendation, I asked what the number was and so on, but I think it was appropriate to keep Chris, keep Chris happy, keep him engaged. I guess that's not a problem, but keeping him in Mount Vernon and so on.
I think we've kept plenty busy. We spent a lot of money tonight, it's going to keep him busy for a while.
Well, and I'd just say that Chris is the first person to step up for his other city employees, make sure that they're compensated fairly as well.
So I would like to say that ironically, I had a number of discussions this week with people in town with Heritage Days going on. People that are, you know, doing good things in town and they interact with city hall in general, I have to like city hall completely. But it's under Chris's leadership and I've had a number of comments and I can tell you that there are a number of things that are very different in my time on council since Chris has been here compared to my time on council previously and as mayor. And I greatly appreciate it individually as a council member, but also as a citizen, and I fully support this.
Thank you Paul. Couldn't you hear that public comments from other people, or comments from people in the public today?
Just out of the blue.
And I echo that, I think, you know, Chris produces just a good team overall in the city hall. I've never had any issues as a citizen, councilman, in any of the boards I was on, it's been nothing but helpful. Gets back to me as anyone, you know, could hope, so. And this is not the easiest city to run, but I think everybody seems to be happy, because we love Mount Vernon here, it's a huge part, so thank you.
Before we embarrass him any further, I would approve of resolution seventeen, seven dash fifteen dash twenty twenty four D.
Second. Paul. Okay, it's moved second to move forward seven fifteen twenty twenty four D, and that is a roll call vote.
Andreessen?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
And that resolution passes. With that resolution, there was my timing of being a little late to start this conversation a few months ago, it's just why, it's August first start, July first start, so that's, don't read anything into that. And now that you've all agreed to that, I will remind you that I usually ask for some written public, some written comment from all council members to generate first timeframe for a written evaluation for Chris, so now that you've all said these good things about it, I will talk to you, I don't think I did that last year. But there is a couple that perform, some people just, you know, just write paragraphs or whatever, some people, it's very brief, so this, this is not a thesis here, so eventually we'll be asking for that feedback. It's, it's good to have on record and it's good to pass on to Chris.
Absolutely.
I think we are to G seven, construction of certain public improvements, approved, planned plans, fixing a date for hearing, taking bids for improvements known as the Fourth Street Northwest Street Repair Project. This is one that's, you're familiar with, right Paul?
Yes, sir.
We want this on the things to do list for a while, this is curb and gutter as well.
This will be due August first and we would be August fifth. And it's probably the street will be in more shape collectively.
It might even be worse than the gravel part of Bryant Road, because at least that is relatively smooth.
You mean, you don't like being seen dirt in your road in front of your house?
Well, you know, it saved me money on my concrete practice. Builds when I get one of those free jobs. So with that, I would move approval of seven dash fifteen dash twenty twenty four F.
Thank you Paul, appropriately for Paul, is there a second? Okay, Paul, we can second to move forward resolution seven fifteen twenty twenty four F of that three block stretch of Fourth Street, and I think it's your call for vote.
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Andreessen?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Next one is approving the real estate purchase agreement and transfer funds for real estate between the city of Mount Vernon and James Jacober. Hopefully we all know where that is, we discussed that a little bit. Comments about that? Chris came up a couple of months ago.
Yeah, we, we estimated that we could get anywhere from seven to nine parking spaces there, depending on how we configure it. Unfortunately, most of the concrete that's already on the lot will probably have to be tore up and redone. But we continue to look to, to expand parking capabilities in the downtown, this is a fairly inexpensive way of at least getting seven or eight more slots for sure. So, talked to a couple of business owners, we would actually then own two rows of parking in a, kind of a squared parking area that would be in the back of the little bays. Kind of off on the other side of the alley on that west side, so. So yeah, most of that work, the concrete work that has been done in-house, so we'll try to save some dollars.
Thank you, Ellen.
I'm looking forward to it, it's like the one thing that I put in front of them that I would think they, they wouldn't get upset about. Where else can we do this?
Don't report concrete in a day like today. Is there a designated entry area and exit area from that lot?
So it will come off, there will be an entry area that's currently, it's kind of got it coned off the block, onto highway line as well, but the alley network that's back there is also very usable right now. It would be configured in order to get the most out of the parking spaces. My expectation is you turn in heading west on the south side of this lot. And you'd be able to make the curb off the alley and then go, so it would be set up as kind of a one-way U-shaped part.
So would we have another, so you'd exit onto the highway?
Enter on one and then exit on the other, so that it's more of a kind of like a one-way.
It's the opposite of what's right behind the local.
Are we in time to, I assume we're in time to get this included in the planning for highway one?
Yes, we're definitely in time, except I would say the third, the third is not being touched.
Oh, got you, yeah, yeah, okay, right, right, right.
So we can go ahead and do this whenever we would like.
Gotcha, okay.
Based upon everything you're reviewing tonight, it will probably be next spring.
I'd move approval of resolution seven dash fifteen dash twenty twenty four G for the purchase of the half lot located between Liberty Avenue and.
I'll second that. Paul and Craig. Move the second to move forward the real estate agreement with James Jacober. And there are no further items on that. and there are no further items on that. Just one comment as it relates to downtown police station project, as that process moves along, we may lose a couple of spots here and there. Hopefully, people get used to the fact that, yes, it may not be on Main Street, but there's more net parking within a half a block of Main Street, so this may not be our last parking increase project, so. Thank you for your remarks on that resolution.
Rose?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
The resolution passes, thank you, James Jacober.
And let's bring that up with G E O, as we mentioned that in the open house too, potentially, I think, that helped explain to some of the citizens regarding when they see that perhaps a couple of parking spots, and as mayor said, that we found more.
And G nine is a resolution concerning the Burris Center, Denver Project, long discussed, come close to fruition.
Good night, Scott.
Yeah, good night, Scott. And that was, right, so actually.
So, yeah, this is a, well, this is an expansion of the grant program that came out of, or remnants of Georgia. This public hearing would be August fifth, days for, bid would be August eighth, and then you'd have a bid award on August nineteenth. This has to be done slightly different because the federal government is involved, so. But, yes, we received a hundred thousand dollar grant to make this itself happen, and if there's any additional costs associated with that, we'll, we'll, we'll cover.
Do we have, I feel like we did when we talked about this, an idea of what the total would be?
So we've increased the size, so the totals wouldn't necessarily match.
Remember what we did to the police station? That's a pretty big generator.
Seventy, it's at least sixty five KW, I think, yeah, it runs the whole thing.
This will be larger, so originally, when we first looked at this, we had intended to essentially keep the lights on and either the heat or air conditioning running, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't run the entire system. This gets a lot closer to that, so we can use this area as more of a, kind of a dedicated shelter for if we bring in cots or something like that right from across in the time of need. So we would then have, we would honestly, at that point, for a community our size, have have a developed pattern of public buildings that all have generators, so we go from the PD to City Hall to Fire Station and then back to LVC, so could be, I think we would be more prepared than ninety percent of the community.
That being said, moving to approve Resolution seven fifteen, twenty twenty four A, quarter
Twenty twenty B.
Yep, taking bids, approving preliminary plans, fixing a date, taking bids for, therefore improvement, none as less than a generator.
Motion, Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Quick reminder, where will it be slated?
It's actually over, so if you are on the west side of the property, we talked to Futcher about this already, it has to be over there because that's where the electric panel is. So it'll be on the west side of the parking lot, closer to the fence that separates the LVC with Futcher's property. So we try to decide it far enough away that it wouldn't be problematic for the Futchers.
So across the park, you're not attached, you're not real close to the building?
No, okay, across the building.
Okay, good. Thanks for that verification. And resolution on the floor for approval, and if there are no further questions, motion up.
Turner?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
That resolution passes, moving to G ten, phase one, Cornell to Bryant Park Intermodal Connection, S R P grant application.
So, yeah, basically, the resolution does two things, it certifies the city when they submit the grant application, understand they're responsible for these improvements for the next twenty years, and you're guarantee, you will guarantee the twenty-five percent match that is required, so. So this acts as a resolution to support, and then it also identifies there are too many criteria in order to submit the grant. So the goal is, obviously, there's three phases to make this connection possibly for if we annex ground out of that Irish Lane, so, you know, this would be our attempt to get the interurban trail connection through our community, majority of the way through our community, so Link County Conservation and Senior Apple can make that happen.
Could you clarify where everybody else has signed and know ahead of time before this meeting, but the word starts with this phase, yeah?
So this would actually start kind of at the walking intersection of Bryant Road, ten, and then Burris. Actually sits on the northwest corner of this.
It's not even a quarter mile, it says a point one seven.
Yeah, ten, and it gives you the Bryant Road at that point.
It's very short and very expensive.
Yes, I think overall, it would be in excess of a million dollars. The whole, if we did all three phases, it's in excess of a million dollars.
And the three phases get us to Irish Lane, is that true?
No. So we don't currently, within our city limits, go, we're only about, I want to say we're like a quarter mile short of Irish, from our city limits. That's why I said there will be a fourth phase if we annex, scout, and continue that.
I would move approval of Resolution seven dash fifteen dash twenty twenty four I, and I don't remember going to I very often. Resolution created in the city of Mount Vernon, phase one, Cornell to Bryant Park Interurban Trail Connection, I would say recreation, take trails, grant application.
Paul, there's a second. Paul Mark. Moving second to fourth, Resolution seven fifteen, twenty twenty four I, if there are no further questions or clarifications needed, all appear, then motion please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
That's right.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
In County Conservation, as the meeting, as that resolution passes, I'm going to attend a In County Conservation meeting in mid-August, where they accept city grant applications from small, middle, small, medium, and larger projects in In County. I'm a attendance meeting every year, not with a grant request, but hopefully next year, I may have a grant request for the next section, so we'll reap money, I think, with In County. I think you looked at that last issue a little bit, so it may have more legs if we have a, we could say that we've started with our third or whatever it is, so that topic will continue. I'm starting to gather comments from bikers that are interested in the trail, and there's not a bike club necessarily in the, in Mount Vernon, if there's a very active Cornell ride group, and there's a lot of bikers around here that are trying to drive itself and get on the trail, ride the bikes, kind of that.
Yeah, I'd hurt a lot, love to.
On to motions for approval, claims list, second version from Marshall this afternoon, I think we're looking at.
Move approval of claims list was presented?
Second. Paul, Craig. Moving second to move forth, the claims list is presented, all appear, then motion please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. J two, it's consideration of many of the engineering agreement with J E O Consultants through the public open house.
Yeah, I'm speaking with Lori right now, I'm still on the first thunder, but, you know, she's been fairly adamant throughout this process that public is a, how many of her, but public is a part of, to this process. J E O, they're gonna, they wanted to hold another business oriented kind of rollout, and we wanted to not only have the business oriented, because they're obviously going to be most effective, but general public is still going to be affected by whatever we use, so the fifteen thousand nine hundred max would be a pittance to say, or save off some of public sentiment.
You know, it's funny, Chris, Lynn Laurie, when I read it, I thought it was very expensive. I think you're absolutely right, it's a pittance compared to the grief that we could receive, but that seems like a lot of money for a two-hour meeting, so I hope that there is going to be turnout for that, and will they help promote it?
Yes, yeah.
And some of that is, in past meetings, they've had food and drinks and things like that, that we may not have to go to that extent for this particular meeting, so we're hoping to reduce the cost a little bit, but this will be the maximum.
Well, this is something that we talked about, we built in for a reason at the very start, so this really isn't a surprise, and I think it'd be, a lot of interested citizens are interested, and they're really proud of the opportunity to see it when they wholly anticipated it would be poorly, look more than awesome. I don't think we'd do it or anything, so I don't think this is a necessary meeting, because it has to be put in front of people at least once.
I will say that you would be very proud to watch here in action, because J E O's at, I think, what's that we're at? And I know certain terms that their representative left knowing, well, how six hours listens to me, and I've never said over.
Well, they're charging top dollar for it. Yes, a lot of this responsibility we're paying for is J E O's responsibility, and how much of it is, you know, Laurie's responsibility, but coming upon the community, upon, say, upon council, to get business involvement, you know, of the ninety-three businesses or whatever that are within a block of Main Street uptown, the attendance percentage has been pretty, pretty weak, and there'll be, there'll be people that'll be the first ones to complain when, when the implementation plan happens, but how do you get them to engage now and to say, this is what's offered towards A, B, and C, you know, get a vote in here, get, get in now, complaining about it after the fact is not an option, so.
Well, that's why we're going this far right now, and pushing so hard for this, so we don't have that, and you still will, but, but I can back it up now, it's like, okay, but.
I have a feeling that you, we may be surprised with the interest from citizens, because frankly, there's a number impacted because they live there, and there's a number of them simply around the area that will be impacted based upon additional traffic and the like, and I, I also believe that it being a historic district will have a certain part of our community interested in this as well, so I, I think this is a very important part of the project, obviously, you know, if you can get that down to fifteen five, that'd be great.
Few less hoagies.
No chocolate cookies.
But I would move approval of the having a additional meeting for the city cemetery to be no, and for the additional fee to be no more than fifteen thousand nine hundred.
Paul, there's a second, Paul, I guess, you, or, with the next couple of dates, are there any date changes like that? We'll all officially.
Yeah, so we'll have the advisory committee meeting on July twenty-third, I sent that out today, and then this one will take place August seventh at the First Street Building. We're a little nervous this one, all the mysteries they're bringing, so, thirteen boards.
That's the case, okay. Let's move to second to fourth, and J two, there are no further questions about that J E O Consultants, in voice, for action, all appear, then motion please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. J three, this is a series of steps that we need to have, moving from downtown to the pool to more of our public works by spot, Bryant Road, salt should, structure.
This is kind of a cart before the horse type process, however, lag time on getting these ordered has kind of put us in a bit of a conundrum. So what I'm proposing is to go ahead and get the salt sand storage unit ordered, which amounts to forty by forty-eight foot, use the concrete blocks somewhere that we utilize the block streets, and then there is a hoop structure that is attached to those walls. The reason for this, salt is super corrosive, so you don't want to put it inside the building, you put it in these, these hoop structures, it's still going to eat away at the metal, your hope is to try and keep the metal as far away from the salt as possible. One of the reasons I'd like to see us move forward with this now is, in the eight years that I've been here, on two occasions, we ran into instances because we, our current, our current storage unit does not allow us to take our full allotment of salt that we purchased in the year, we have to get it and at least do sometimes three shipments. The problem that we run into is, depending on the timing of those shipments and how fast we go through that salt, on a couple of occasions, we have really gotten down to the bottom of the barrel before that shipment actually came, and there's been a couple times where we're, we're actually not just strictly sanding. Most communities, that's fine, when you're in Mount Vernon, you have hills, the way that we do, sand just isn't going to be the only thing we're going to put down, so, so we have money available to do this particular project, even if we do not decide to sell the other site and take those funds, we can still have our salt storage out here, it's not going to hinder operation. So it's one of the only things, I think, from just a purely lead time, the fact that a contractor would come in and construct this course outside of the pad, I'd just like to get a, do some more concrete thrown, I guess, they're great. Yeah.
What's the lifespan estimated on these?
So, you know, they'll, they'll last, depends on the process you.
Depends on the wind.
So we, we've learned a few things, one of the things that Hilton has talked about is, is, of course, salt and concrete mixing is bad, like, when you're walking on sidewalk and you see pox marks or, and a parcel of attitude, because there's been a pretty aggressive salt usage here. So we've talked about actually doing some sealing with the concrete with asphalt, putting a layer of asphalt down, and kind of bringing it up those walls somewhat, as long as they don't have exposed metals, if they start to crack, and if we're gonna start to see the salt kind of seep in there, but the hoop structures themselves are fairly, fairly rigid, but they're, you know, they're susceptible to hail and high winds, so theoretically, the walls themselves should be, and the base should last as long as you like, as long as you don't drag through them, but the hoops are actually tough, they could be anywhere from ten, twenty years, and see, you know, it's nothing like, so.
But it's not like we're spending four, three grand every year.
No.
Question about site, where would it be on that whole public works site, in comparison to the two, where the two buildings are?
Being west of the north building?
Yeah.
Yeah, almost due west.
Yeah, the plan is to put.
So away from the houses out there, okay.
Yeah, so it'd be the, the north building that's there currently, just west of that will be, eventually be a brine shed, smaller building, and then west of that, a little bit further, would be the hoop structure for the storage.
Imagine like a twenty by twenty kit garage that will be right adjacent to the, that north building, that's where they'll put the brine. That's where they'll put the brine making equipment inside, and then just further to the left of that would be the structure.
Just south of the road track? That comes to the road track?
Be south of it. Yeah. Yeah, it would, being neighbors, it would be closer to the road track, so, you know, trying to hide the more intrusive features of the public work site on the north side of the property.
Well, with all that said, I would move approval of the salt shed hoop structure purchase for the estimated cost of delivering construction of forty-three thousand dollars.
Second to fourth, the salt shed hoop structure. Ready to order that? All favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. To Ferguson Water Works, water meter time.
Yeah, these are all just, honestly, they're invoices for merit for meters and then some of their AMI equipment that they started to be ordering and be stored on site. Consequently, we did have a reconstruction meeting this morning. As I told the mayor, they still have a really aggressive installation schedule. It's going to be done by before Christmas. I wish them all the best.
We act on these one at a time, Chris?
You will act on them one at a time.
With that?
I would move to approve the first invoice, number zero four eight seven nine one eight for one hundred and sixty-three thousand forty-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second. Second to fourth, the first person who wants to move forward. Ready to order that? All favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, same principle.
With approval of Ferguson invoice zero four eight seven nine two zero in the amount of fifteen thousand four hundred dollars seventy-nine cents.
Second. Moving second to fourth, the next invoice from Ferguson. Ready to order that? All favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is the next invoice from Ferguson. Move the second consideration of Ferguson Water Works invoice zero four eight 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 three four. Mark, second.
Second.
They're great on that one. Move the second to move forward to the third Ferguson Water Works invoice. All favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the last Ferguson Water Works invoice, number four.
Move approval.
Thank you, Paul.
Invoice number zero four eight 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 three four dash one in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Second. Paul Scott for the fourth Ferguson invoice. Ready to order that? All favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And for the record, Craig was responsible for the most expensive.
I mean, I would get most, if this project's successful.
And eighth is body cam purchase this one, police department with the grant.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a, applied for a grant last year through the SRT, Small Rural and Tribal Police. It's a grant specifically eligible for the small rural police departments to upgrade and replace our, our diminishing body cameras, or the ones we currently operate under the Motorola system. The Vistas are phasing, they're phased out, they're not, they're not manufacturing those anymore, and they're beginning to fail. This will replace our body cam features, it'll tie in with our current car systems, it looks like we have already, and upgrade us to their newest models from that. So it's a fifty-fifty grant match, so just looking to proceed with that.
I'd move approval of the replacement of the body cams for the city's cost of six thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Second. Thanks. Move the second to move forward to body cam purchase. Thanks for researching and going after these grants, everybody here. If there's other questions of staff or chief, put to a vote. All favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chief, just carries. Who does your grant writing? Thank you. Thank you. I know that can be arguable.
It can be time-consuming. Luckily, this one's a pretty easy, this is a pretty easy grant because it's the smaller ones, and I'm not writing for, to equip all Chicago PD or anybody with grants, but, or with cameras, so that was good.
Did you know fire or ambulance SWAT numbers here tonight with a situation outside? But I was, the staff and everybody, public and council, do a thank a fireman, thank a EMT, thank a policeman, my name is Jada. And I looked at my peers, most recently at Strawberry Point, when they, everybody turned in their pagers, I was having a bad day. I was just having a bad day. So, thank you. And I've told chiefs this multiple times recently, that my conversation with him, "Thank you for not being in the news."
Remember that, Nathan.
Well, not doing anything. I got so newsworthy that I.
Yeah, I try.
Parceur, board pool recommendations.
So if you remember, the original pool renovations without changing any of the features or adding any features was one point two seven six million at that speed. We, we knew going into that process that we were going to look at the, the features and try and, try and come up with a, a solid project. So this is the recommendation. It's still low with the amount of money that was borrowed. There would be a new.
Which is two million, right?
Correct. There will be a new kids' play area, they call it a play net. So the first image that you see behind the budget is up in the right-hand corner is kind of what that play net looks like, and.
We're on page seven, you. Is there several pages?
Yep.
Thank you.
So that's the first feature. You'll have to disregard some of the estimates because they're still working on that.
So and this would go into the zero grid?
Yeah, so where the.
Put all of it on that channel?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then this would be in its place. And it does have a little slide feature, so that was kind of one of the things that we really wanted to give was a slide that the young, young babies could still continue to use and they wouldn't have to leave, but they're like.
Your name was uttered in vain in my house this weekend when my nieces were promised the slide at the pool, and I had to tell them. My sister-in-law was not happy about that.
I will tell you that I forgot a lot. Between the pool leader not working and, and the slide being on, I'm not popular with that. I have not visited the pool here as much as you.
I will say that I've been to a number of places that have this type of feature, and it is very popular with the younger folks. I've not tried it, I saw. I, I think this is a great investment to keep the pool going and attractive.
So the next four pages are actually kind of one and the same. Where the old, kind of, I'll call it a racing slide, we're on the north side of the property. We have determined, or actually what is it, just determined that we can do a dual slide in that location, and because of the, the clearance that we need at the, the bottom of where the slide enters the pool, the dual slide becomes, I don't want to say imperative, but one slide requires so much square footage rolled off in order, it's kind of a, kind of a catch base. And so if you're going to do that in that area of the pool, you might as well go ahead and try and have two, and then you get a, gets you all the way more of a rectangular shape off the wall. So there's some different models. This really kind of depends, A, on availability, and B, on what the state's going to approve. They're all fairly similar. Most of them have at least one corkscrew slide and then another that might be, be covered as well. But that too is, is also recommended by the park and rent board. And then the last page shows an additional slide, kind of off to the, on the south side. That would be a standalone slide, they'd like to do that as a bid alternative. Once we take the whole project out to bid, if, if numbers are favorable, then it would be an additional feature that they would like to potentially see to add. There is still two diving boards in the same location as the existing diving boards. The three meter had to go by the way side, so there'll be two one-meter diving boards instead of the three meter and one meter.
They just have to go off it three times to get one.
Yes.
So, Chris, just to be clear, the page seventy-seven, the picture is a green slide.
Yes.
They're posing this as a new.
There would be additional concrete, it would be on the southwest side closest to Davis.
And would there need to be a new receiving pool?
No, so it's a all-in-one contraction. So that, if you look at the very end of the slide, you come into a small basin of water. So it's, it is one hundred percent standalone, standalone, goes a little faster than the other two slides, a little higher.
You ever wipe the water?
No, but I, but I've seen this feature in.
I tried.
Actually, this, this type of slide, I've actually been on where you end up in a chute. So yeah.
The nice, the nice part is that standalone, you don't have to have another basin.
Right.
We couldn't do this into the existing pool because of the power line on the right side. So this one is much taller. And of course, being a standalone, it's easy just to put this as a bid alternate and see whether or not your numbers come in positive. And if not, you know, it's something that we don't necessarily have to, to include, but concrete would be extended around the edges. There's, the areas that you see in, in green and blue around that edge is actually shade structures.
Gotcha.
So it's not going to be obviously a brand-new pool per se, there'll be quite a bit of it that's going to be new by the time this is done, but our hope is obviously that, you know, it's not, it's not the twelve or thirteen million dollar structure that we had looked at, but it is going to be new, have new features, and hopefully be excited.
Has Katie or somebody been spoken with or, or had their opinion pulled on what this would do to staffing?
Correct. She was part of the process altogether. So again, having the dual slide actually helps by reducing.
Yeah.
And then the, the standalone slide could require two because they have to have one up in the tower and one at the bottom, they could put something up, but she's looking at various zones, it's still the same confines for the most part.
Yeah.
So.
Excellent. So our next step is just to tell them to go ahead and continue the process?
Correct.
We don't need to make a motion or anything like that, okay? I'd say, yeah, continue the process.
Yes. Oh, a quick question. You're, you're hearing affirmation there, but meets are not an issue, we still have.
No, that, that center section of the pool is the same.
Dude swimmers, they're a public, local minority, I mean, doesn't impact them in any, in a way, they're still okay?
No, the, so we currently have two heaters system. The renovations are calling for one large heater, so we shouldn't have a failure. The failure that we found on the existing unit is because of the way that it was located and the proximity of the wall. It just wasn't enough cool air coming into the, cool down the system and it burned up.
As we extend the concrete, there's a different question. The old umbrella, the small umbrella structure, really better than the old cells.
As is the tree.
The tree gone, yeah?
The tree is gonna make out by distance. I think it is so hideous.
We're making a sure.
Matt and I have read about that for eight years. It gets shaded, I'm like, what shade? I don't understand.
It's like a total hole of shade.
Well, I ask that because I do see, we have been there for one of those shaded structures that I think will get more than.
We do, the, the square footage becomes an issue. We do have a new shade structure that's out, kind of in front of the current concession stand.
Yeah.
And then, of course, on the west side, this is where the new shade structures will go, but yeah, extending concrete where we can and putting the shade in is, was kind of imperative to give more, more access to seating, because we're gonna lose some on the north side where the, the slide structures will be. We need to gain it on the west if possible. So, okay.
I would say there's no hitch out of doing display boards when we were looking at three or four options the last couple of years. What's, if this is settled, decided, or what we're gonna do with.
Yeah, they'll give you display boards in City Hall and then the LBC, once we get approval on the actual slide configurations from the state.
And would the intention or is the timeframe looking at for next summer?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
To be completed by opening of swivel.
Yes. That's the goal.
Excellent.
All right, Scott, yeah, so are we still gonna talk about shutting down the pool a little bit early?
Um, not significantly, just because of the, the timing of this, the state is behind on approving apparatus. That's the other catch for this is, we still have to gain approval from Iowa Department of Health on all of the apparatus that we're going to do, the plans that we're going to undertake. So if that leg's behind by any means, or we have to make changes after the fact, that could affect next year's opening. So we can do it correctly? I'm hopeful.
So on that item, just discussion considerations, anything else you need at this point?
No, and that kind of goes back to that comment, where the reason we're pushing this, normally I wait until they have those boards available and show you all of these options, um, kind of a nice display, but we just don't have the time.
Move forward. Item ten, Baker Group maintains contract, LBC contract renewal.
Baker Group maintains the re-construction stuff like that, so we never do a three-year, we haven't done a three-year contract with them yet. There are other maintenance contractors out there, albeit Baker is the, the installed three, we just gave up, installed it for three years, so the end of the state hasn't had money.
Which is why you didn't include it here.
So this would be one of your options.
I would move to approve the Baker Group maintenance contract for one year at nine thousand two hundred and eight dollars.
Second, Craig Paul. Move the second to the fourth, Baker Group maintains contract with LBC. If there's no further questions, all favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, consideration of twenty twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five hundred truck with the fire department.
Well, I was gonna give them a hard time and tell them because they're not here, but just forget about it, but. There's this little storm and they were like, do we really do theater? This was a, this is, the fifty-three thousand one DVD is not a new question price, that will end up being closer to eighty to ninety thousand by, by the time it's all said and done. So you're, we're essentially buying a base unit, and then they'll get that equipped later on. This will be, I hate to call it a first-out apparatus, so they have one vehicle that they take as the first out, but oftentimes they have DB crews, you can't fit all of the DB crew on that first-out apparatus, and it doesn't require us to take one of the large engines out there. So this would give the, the fire department kind of that freedom to take additional equipment out there in the truck bed, but not have to take a full-service engine out there and put the miles, things like that on there. So the, the purchase made sense to staff, and they have over three hundred thousand dollars in their, their capital equipment levy that's already accrued, so.
Yeah, there's no mention of any kind of trade, so this is a brand-new purchase.
Yes.
Inventory addition.
And as they evolve, I think their operations evolve, training evolves. We're seeing a lot more calls for service, vehicle accidents, pileage parts, things of that nature that require that we get there a little quicker.
Store it, fits in the station?
Yeah, it's a matter of they just keep transitioning out older equipment. But they do have room currently for additional apparatus.
I had no approval of the purchase of the twenty twenty-four Chevrolet Silverado in the amount of fifty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-two. Unequipped with the funding coming from the Fire Department Equipment Tax Fund.
Paul, is there a second? Omar, moving second to move forward, the fire department's purchase of a twenty twenty-four Chevrolet truck. Any other questions or comments? All who are willing, the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Who carries? Item was added, there was a discussion consideration of the voice, new one for J E O.
Yeah, just. They made the, they made the orders week by sending this in at what, I don't know.
We could see it Saturday afternoon. So I came in the. I didn't know, maybe it came to us the night before, so.
Yeah, so you also got their monthly progress report, so, but I'm very happy with what the project's been moving forward, so hearing positive feedback from individuals a little bit that have attended, certainly.
The approval for that. Item noise, J E O, is there a motion to that fact?
Number one, two, approved. Item noise, number one, five, two, three, seven, for J E O consulting.
Is there a second? Second?
Craig.
It's Craig, Mark Craig. Moving second to move forward, the next item, voice for J E O consulting. And street skating project, all who are willing, the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Reports, the police reports. Shannon, include the regular.
Beyond the regular report, Heritage Days was great for us, a good crowd and no, no Heritage Days issues. We had one arrest, but it was not Heritage Days related, so.
Heritage Days. If you.
A question came up from a couple of different times, a couple of different people. Some of the UTVs cruise around town. They seem to be being driven more like cars and trucks and, you know, a golf cart or something. And there's some concern about speed on, you know, some of the outroads. And related to that, Second Avenue, as you know, as soon as pool season happens, that becomes the soccer mom.
Which I think ironically was, we took a complaint this week, or a request to change the ordinance on golf carts as well. Because of some of that same issues that they're seeing there. UTVs, we've got a little less control over because the state put them back on the state code issues. We still prohibit them from being on Highway One, which we see them are occasionally there, and they're still prohibited on Business Thirty. The problem is, is trying to figure out, are they just cruising Business Thirty, or are they getting on at a certain point, going to the next location and getting off, which is allowed from that standpoint? So speed is, I believe, thirty, if I have to look and go back and look at the code, I believe it's thirty-five mile an hour regardless of where they're operating at, even the county roads and stuff like that. But some of them are going well above that out as well. Not so much in the city, but again, if they're doing thirty-five in the city, that's plenty for those as well. Now, we're starting to get feedback on both of those from our safety concerns. The golf cart request for change on the ordinance was that, was they're seeing kids operating them. We've been getting complaints about kids, like an eight-year-old driving the golf cart while the parent is sitting in the passenger side. That's prohibited. Obviously, they have to be eighteen to operate either of those in the city from that standpoint. So it's confusing and difficult because the county's ordinances are different than the city's. And the state kind of vamped it back a little bit for the UTVs and separated it out.
I appreciate that you're looking into it. And with that, somewhat related, because some people have asked how, you know, wouldn't it be nice to have the speed trailer up on Second Avenue now?
That speed trailer has been very popular. That was one of the first things I have, I have a waiting list now of requests. I pulled it today thinking, you know, like, I don't want it to blow away, but from that standpoint. But yes, that thing is, I've received more requests from that than anything. And it's ironic because I'm, you know, it's, we put it there, it seems to impact the traffic in those areas. So I think it might be something we can look forward, you know, if we see some specific areas, and maybe we do put some digital signs up on a more permanent basis in certain locations.
Debbie and I have a bike route when we don't, when we're not going out on the trails. And we noticed it on Washington over in Lisbon, and I saw the effectiveness of literally, you know, several vehicles actually. All of a sudden, you could tell several blocks in advance that their speed was reduced.
Right.
So very appreciative of that.
First spot I put it was out by the police department, just because I wanted to see, I wanted to watch it and make sure it was working the way it's supposed to be. It was programmed right, and it was, it's, I noticed a dramatic impact out in our area. And, you know, I said, Malvern and Road is First Street West by us, out there has always been one of my best fishing spots.
It's a runway.
I may have seen some of you out there.
There are those that question wisdom of that since they aren't leaving, but I'm not here to, I'm positioned. I just am glad to hear that it's having the desired effect. I also noticed the Business Thirty speed time was up and running. And again, especially with that intersection, it's really imperative. And for someone that in my sixty-three years has gotten his share of moving violations, I can appreciate what you're doing. And thank you.
Thank you.
Comments for Chief Shannon, any other locations to add to this list?
Shoot me an email.
Public Works reports. Pictures, I have.
I don't have anything to add other than, yeah, just to take you back to off the chief. Heritage Days went well. It seemed a little panicky at first, but everything fell right into place, and I think we had all reduction in order to make that happen like clockwork, so I'm pretty proud of my staff anyway.
I used to be.
Yeah, the parade, the parade was really good.
For those who do that, somebody on the floor had really good aim, and it smacked me right in the chest with one. Might have been one of Ellen's daughters. I was super, I told all of the public works employees, like, you had to bring your kids to get anywhere here, so. But it did feel, to be honest with you.
It was a hot weekend.
And, yeah, so at the end of the event, things went really well that way, too. People kind of cleared out pretty quick, and we were able to get in and get things. Move ground opened up a lot sooner than we thought, so, yeah, I think PD had a lot to do with that as well. But, yeah, other than that, I have nothing to add.
Thank you for the setup, and thank you for the cleanup.
I saw when you'd read, you'd like my, my little code up here.
So I like the. Anything, any questions for Parks and Rec, you know, Matt's out here. Library report, questions of grace. Discussion ends, Mayor's report. I left invitations for the Grisgirks Community Foundation event, that's happening in a couple of weeks. Just because our connection with our community foundation being through that group and present connection there as well. Election for our district three candidates are thinking about doing a forum here in town, which is still probably a date and a location. Probably about September nineteenth or so. And our state senator, Charlie Flitog, is interested in doing a listening post on at least open evidence domain and the pipeline thing. But any other issues that are out there, so he's asking for the other issues that he wants, and he wants, he even wants us to research, the researcher today, he talked to us about when he, that's not said yet, but both of them are coming to our burden something soon. Council reports, committee reports, city administrative report.
I won't go into too great detail on either of those last two items, the DOT meeting and Ferguson. I'll shoot you an email either tomorrow or Wednesday, and I'll go over those. Ferguson was obviously just a pre-construction meeting, and they still have a very aggressive timeframe. They are, they will send a total of six note of evidence to each property owner, so five by mail and one door hanger as they move from one location to the next. So excited about that project being underway and done. DOT did not get it as well as we would hope, because I put all the library back tomorrow.
Anything else that needs to come? Could you say that with regards to Ferguson, feel free to put my house, I go to first, so that I can provide other citizens' feedback on how it goes.
Yeah, they're.
I don't want to speak for the, yeah, the council members, but if you, if you need the triad to first, yeah, get it picked so that we can then put on social media, this is happening. They've already done our houses.
And they'll be, part of this is not only the water meter replacement, but they'll do, they're doing a lead service line, visual inspection of each house, they're looking for cross-contaminations, per se. Like, there's a lot that goes into this individual project that they'll be doing that will be focused, obviously, will be. Yeah, but I'm excited, I'm excited to not have to have somebody spend five or seven days watching what you need. Excited that we'll be able to potentially save off some of this water loss.
Anything else that needs to come before this council this meeting? The lines we are adjourned, thank you very much.